And I'm really looking forward to get married here.
That looks like they have an accent here. They have one right here.
Yeah, but I follow him in on corner so he can't come.
The October 13th meeting of the Henn County Order of Commissioners, let the record indicate that all three Commissioners are present. First item is to approve the executive session.
Do the pledge.
Well, that's on down here, but you want to do it before?
Well, normally we don't.
Okay, let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now can we approve the executive?
Now we can.
Thank you. Is there motion?
Someone up?
Second.
Discussion? Call in favor?
I'm going to abstain. I have to abstain.
He wasn't here.
I wasn't here. Remember, I had to leave.
Oh, this is true.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries.
Abstain.
That was executive session for September 22nd. Is there a motion for executive session for October the 13th?
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Approval minutes for September 22nd and October the 3rd?
I wasn't here. I had to leave on the 22nd.
Okay, I'll second on the 22nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
With one abstention. October the 3rd?
Some of them.
Second.
Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Next on the agenda is variance request. Gary Murray.
Good afternoon. Gary Murray with Terror Site Development Office at 571 Mona Boulevard in Carmel. I'm here about the Malini property. It's on the 211th Street, south side of the road, just east of 37. It's about 35 acres. There's two different zoning classifications on the property right now. We're planning ongoing in front of the County Plan Commission to subdivide the existing R1 portion into three lots and then leave the larger 28 acres as the fourth lot. In doing so, and this is the old Bison Farm, there is an existing asphalt driveway that runs behind the existing houses and connects on the east side of the property to 211th We are asking for a variance to put in a new gravel driveway on the west side of the existing homes, on our property, but on the west side of the existing homes. Do you guys have the packet I can share?
Is this screen presentation working? Is that the same as?
Yes. Just right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So when we add this new gravel driveway?
Which one's the gravel driveway?
The one in red?
The one you read would be the proposed gravel driveway, yes.
Okay.
It should say new gravel driveway.
Yeah.
With an arrow pointing to it. It's pretty small.
So what's the controversy?
Well, the county has an ordinance that you can't have a driveway serve more than two properties without having to be brought up to county standards. We could go ahead and put a gate in between. I've worked with Dave. We could put a gate in between and block it off and it would be two drive, one driveway serving two lots, but we didn't think that would be good for public safety and getting fire trucks and everything in. And if we gated it, they wouldn't know which one to go into possibly and it would affect somebody's life. So we're asking really for the variance that it serves more than two lots and that it does not have to be brought up to county highway road standards.
So can you explain what I'm looking at? That's my problem. Is this supposed to be like a driveway?
It's going to be an ingress easement?
There's an existing, the existing drive now, just like that, that comes in here. This is all in parcel. He's subdividing this, putting this in an easement. That's still there and they're proposing. Basically, the variance, as Gary stated, the variance they're requesting is that this drive that serves more than two lots, you put in and not meet county standards.
It would end up being a private driveway. And we would put the plaque language that highway wants to make sure that it could ever...
Would you have sufficient right of way reserved that it could be upgraded to a road?
It's a 50-foot width that we've got proposed for the east of the easement.
Yeah, but is that sufficient?
There's a couple 90-degree turns.
Well, I mean, this just looks odd. Just being honest with you.
Well, that's the way it is today. Get in and out? A fire truck or anything like that?
I don't know how they're going to make those turns.
It'll be tight.
It seems like you ought to be cutting off angles.
I mean, back, this is a big asphalt pad in here right now where they used to turn around semis.
Are these for houses or is this commercial?
Well, these will be for houses, but that's existing there today.
They're proposing another, an additional drive to technically say this drive can serve these two, this drive can serve these two.
Those two?
We're kind of in agreement with the petitioner in that to gate it off just to meet that requirement isn't real safe.
Well, I'm more concerned when you subdivide the rest of it, which will happen.
That's not in the plans right now that I'm aware of.
But those are the commitments I think we ought to be asking for, that any further subdivision of the parcel, you'll upgrade these to roads. I mean, wouldn't anybody else have to do that on this kind of acreage?
If it was subdivided, but it's agricultural right now, it would take a rezone and other things we could connect to.
It's not our first rodeo.
I know.
So this happens quite often where we just kind of nib at it part by part, poor boy. And I'm not accusing anyone, but the next owner.
I was just going to state that we've had several of these come through in the past that are similar to this. It's just a requirement that anything over two lots is built to county standards or they get a variance from you guys to build it substandard. You've approved those in the past. It's up to you. My main concern was fire access with the 90-degree turns. And with the second access point, that alleviates that fear of the fire trucks not being able to get through. And as far as anything in the future goes, when that plaque comes around or that subdivision comes around and we look at it, it's totally new. And it could, the requirement could be at that point in time to require them to build it to standards or they would have to get another variance.
Is there a motion?
I'm not comfortable with it personally, but...
And you're fine with it, Dave? You guys are fine with it?
I believe that we discussed it this morning and we would be in agreement with it.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good.
I have a couple items for you today. First item falls under agreement with some supplements. It's a supplement with CHA Consulting. This is for Lowe's Way Keystone Parkway area. The supplement's an amount of $64,900. This is an old project. This all involves mitigation that we had to do when we originally built it.
Wetland?
Wetland mitigation. There was so much there that it actually went to two sites. This $64,900 is for a couple more years of monitoring, installation. We're looking at approximately 900 new trees to go in, the two sites where this mitigation has been. Just a little background, you know, we go through monitoring. This last year, we got to the end of monitoring and we barely missed our requirement to end monitoring.
It shouldn't be off by now.
And go, this is the second time this has happened. So this go around, we put in, Matt's worked with our consultant, Matt Lee, and we're going to do a little bit extra just so we can hopefully end this. And it's, some years are real good, other years, things just don't grow. Two sites, two different requirements. We hope we get it covered this time.
And this is your recommendation?
Our recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Maybe we ought to be looking seriously at just giving money to the bank. Or future projects.
Back at this time, yeah.
I know. Future projects, that way they could be big wetlands.
The last couple we've done, that's what we've done, but we have been told that that bank availability is quickly coming to an end.
Let's use it as fast as we can.
We've talked to a couple consultants. We've actually met, had them come in and we met with Parks and Surveyors Office to try to come up with possibilities, but...
It's going to be a huge issue in the not-too-distant future. You're not going to be able to find adequate mitigation resources and you can't pay into a bank because they don't have it.
Well, the thing is, we maybe want to talk to Carter Prairie that are working on wetlands and stuff like that to see. It's in the watershed.
That's going to be our best.
Yeah, because I mean, they're actively doing wetlands.
Next item is request permission to advertise for Bridge 125. This is Atlantic Road over Stone Creek, just south of 32. It's been closed for some time. We're going to, we're asking for permission to advertise this for a November 24th letting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Along with that, we will have you sign a title sheet. And like last time, our consultants are asking for a blank title sheet. So they're just going to cut and paste, and that's what we did the last time we signed the title sheet as well, so.
Do we need a separate motion on this? Connor? Do we need a separate motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second with a follow-up to assure that it's done according to what we anticipate.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Last item is a public perch quotation. We had some guardrail repair on three different bridges throughout the county. We solicited four quotes. Solicited four contractors received free quotes. We recommend an awarding for the low responsive quivers whose report construction in the amount of $13,322 they've done to work for us in the past and work for later with them.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all I have. I'll turn it over to Brad.
Thank you.
I had nothing else.
Nothing, Brad?
Nope.
Covered it all.
Emergency Operations Division.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Yes.
I've got a handful of things for you today. First request is a request for contract with Office Pride to do some additional cleaning at the Cumberland Road Dispatch and EOC area. This is in addition to buildings and grounds. It's mostly because of the 24/7 operation of the facility.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the next one is a request that Legal has helped us out with. It's a request for emergency management to have two credit cards issued to them. The ordinance that's before you is crafted after the one that we currently have standing for PSC. We have internal policies that NIMC State Board of Accounts, and so we have the internal policy ready to go with this as well.
Move to approve.
So we need to approve the ordinances separately and adopt on first reading.
Okay, I move to, I move to adopt 101325A on first reading.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I move to adopt ordinance 101325A.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Move to adopt ordinance 101325B.
Second.
First reading, sorry.
I'm first reading, I'm sorry.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to adopt ordinance number 101325B.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Second, sorry.
Connor, do you want to interrupt anything else?
I can go all day.
We appreciate it. We have a contract, another contract request that April's going to present.
Hello?
Hello.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
I saw you yesterday.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I saw you yesterday.
Yes, it's been a short weekend. Well, I'm just here to request approval for an updated contract with IUI Polis Center for our multi-hazard mitigation plan. We had a couple delays with the IUI contracting office and we worked with Andrew and we were able to fix out some of the language in the addenda and we're requesting your approval.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Before we, we have a piece of equipment that's no longer in use that we found during our review that we'd like to take off of our asset list.
This is for the phone system?
Yes.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Court of Administration, Jill Akin.
Good afternoon.
Hello. We have several things today. The first is for popper attorney for Superior Court Four. Andrew Dillard is replacing Lars Olson, who Lars went to the prosecutor's office, so we need to sub out his contact.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, and then the next item is we have a request for meal request authorizations for the JRAAC Committee Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. There was one for a meeting that we just had and one for a meeting we have in November.
These are not to exceed amounts?
Yes. Well, one of them is the one that we, the meeting we just had, it's already done, and then the second one is the not to exceed.
So you're asking for forgiveness, right?
Second.
I ate some of the pizza.
Oh, so you're asking for forgiveness?
Yeah.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Jill, on the popper contracts?
Sure.
Are you aggregating them by attorney so we know how much we're contracting with and how much available time we're contracting for out of the normal year?
Yes, I do have that and I have that information. It's not updated with the individuals that we're talking about today, but I...
It needs to be because we've got, I mean, we just, because the judges don't know perhaps how much time's being contracted with what, and I just want to make sure we're still giving adequate representation.
Yes.
As a whole.
Yes, so I hadn't updated it yet because I didn't have them approved yet, so I, but I will update the cumulative form.
Thank you.
And then the second one, or I'm sorry, the third request here is for Circuit Court. Gray Harris, I believe also went to the prosecutor's office and Andrew's replacing him.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then the fourth one is Superior Court Two, Andrew's replacing Mario Maslamany.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then the last one, Neil Ziliak is going to take over Lars', Lars' half of the Veterans Court contract.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. What is this?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll be presenting on behalf of Mr. Morden's this afternoon. He's out of town. Beginning with item number one, I spoke with Mr. Morden's last week, so I can answer any questions, but all the proposals that I'm about to put before you, he has asked me to present and he has no objections to.
Could you tell us on the software how many gigabytes that...
A lot. A lot.
Good answer.
Item number one before you is a request for approval for the people-driven technology...
Do you suggest we take items one through 10?
Yeah, good idea.
Seeing how we have just it presented and it's based, suggested approval, and I would move to approve the items on the agenda for IAS.
Discussion? You don't want Mike to go on? Riley?
There's much more to be seen.
He's very knowledgeable in IT.
He is, I know.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
She saved your toast.
Thank you.
Town County Health Department, Jason Lemaster.
Good afternoon. Luckily, we only have one item today, not 10. Before you today is request permission to transfer an asset. These assets are two vehicles that we've replaced. We actually have received permission to dispose of the vehicles in last month's meeting, and then after that meeting, I was contacted by the House of Hazardous Waste Facility.
Who? I'm sorry.
What's that?
Who were you contacted by?
Leslie at House of Hazardous Waste and Soil and Water Conservation. Sorry, I drew in a blank today.
That's fine.
And they had asked if it would be possible for those vehicles to possibly be transferred to them. They do have, probably have, they're 10 years old, but they do have some usable life in them and thought it would be worthwhile to transfer those assets over and give them some life so they don't have to drive personal vehicles.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Henn County Assessor, Kevin Ho.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm here today to request your approval on a proposed contract for an appraisal, residential appraisal. The appraisal will be used in the defense and support of a pending appeal of the Indiana Board of Tax Review.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Wait a second, I haven't called you up yet.
I know, but you're being slow.
I'm slow. Twenty-seven things to sign here, Trina. Okay, Trina Bieber, Hamilton County, Corr, how's that?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have before you this afternoon an agreement with my current e-recording vendor simplified to offer consumer edition e-recording. That is where a citizen who had a non-conveyance document could access a link on our website and e-record a document.
Yes, I don't have to come and go through...
Well, it's non-conveyance only, and this is fairly new, and they have offered, I'm one of the, like, first ten counties for them to offer this to, and I opted to try it because they are going to allow me to choose which document types that I would like to start with. And of course, it will be non-conveyance documents, so we won't be doing any deeds or plats, things like that. So I just felt like, I don't really know that I, that it will be utilized a lot, but I feel like to have it available in case we were to ever shut down again, this could be an option for residents to e-record. We're gonna start out with, like, assumed business names. I thought it would be good for, like, HOAs that file liens.
Leans?
Yeah, releases of HOAs, you know, for people that want, don't want to drive over here and want to just e-record it.
Can representatives, lawyers file on behalf of their clients?
Yes. It's just, it's, it is very detail-oriented. I mean, they do a verification of phone number, email address, and they also have to upload their license when they actually file something in my office with this.
Okay. And the other thing is, they have all kinds of disclaimers in that contract on liability. We need to make sure we post that before people use it.
Okay.
That they're gonna hold us harmless, that's voluntary, all this others. And Legal needs to work with you on that, because we can't go against the vendor if things don't work right.
Okay, so Andrew?
Andrew will work with you.
Does he make a motion contingent of that?
Yeah, I move to approve subject to the clear disclaimer of liability.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's kinda cool. Hopefully, you don't get those Montana people filing them.
Commissioner, committee reports.
I have none.
We did have another JRAAC meeting, we're trying to get all our organizational documents in shape, but I continue to think it's going to be, once we're up and running, very helpful with respect to communication with the courts and the various people that interact with the courts, such as the Sheriff's Department, probation, et cetera. And I would like to work with, I think Andrew, you worked on pro bono? The pro bono review of pro bono contracts, or not contracts, but...
Public defender.
Public defender?
Oh, yes.
It received a very favorable response from the courts and folks, so let's take that off the shelf and start working on it again.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
And just to let you know, so the executive director of the...
Andrew.
...motion on the court-appointed attorneys is gonna be visiting next week for a work session. The following week, your following meeting. I'm sorry, yes. Following meeting, yeah.
Perfect, timing is wonderful. Much afraid by mom.
We, yeah, we heard the same, so we figured we'd make sure it moved forward.
Very good.
But, oh, Commissioner, committee reports?
For me?
Yep. Okay, Connor, it's your turn, you can talk now.
Thank you. The first item I have is the RFQ for the consultant services to establish the Hamilton County Community Land Trust. Commissioner, we did move the time for the questions and the submission date back it was originally. The question deadline was October 29th, and the response due date was November 7th. We since moved it back to the deadlines for questions is November 12th, and the response date is November 21st. That should give everyone...
There was an October, I thought, 22nd in there.
We amended, so there's, the move updated once since this morning.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we pushed that back. So we're requesting the authority to publish the notice today, or the students can get it on the paper, which I think will be Wednesday, but we did put everything back two or three weeks for more time for responses, conversation and whatnot.
And I would like to work with you on who we send direct copies to?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
The next item I have is the RFPQ for the US 31 corridor water and wastewater infrastructure investment project. This is to start the BOT process for Phase Three. We are requesting the authority to publish the notice with the deadline for when the, for this to be due would be November 10th from today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
The next two items I have, one is the, is a design contract with RQAW for the Hamilton County Community Corrections, Third Floor Build Out, conceptual design only. This is with RQAW. Steve Wood is here if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, but I believe this has been approved by the Commissioners, at least the plan, and to get moving forward to figure out what the budget would be. I can answer any questions, or Steve can answer any questions you may have for this.
So we need to take action on this?
Yes, then there's two, one is for the Third Floor Community Corrections, and there's another one with RQAW for the design of the jail pod, so there's two separate...
Motion to approve both.
Second.
Steve, did you wanna say anything?
This meets the, it's fully funded by council. This gives us the design for the jail complex, the add-ons in the back, where we can just do one pod at a time. We own everything, all, part of it was, we own all the work being done on this and takes us the CD, and for Community Corrections, it will give you a layout, what it looks like, and then go from there, then we report.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
That is all I have, Felicia, thank you.
Director of Administration?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, a few items for you today. First one presenting is a letter of request that was authored to us from the city of Noblesville, Ms. Sarah Reed. She's requesting permission to work with our team to utilize the parking garage, particularly the fifth floor area, due to the Embrace Downtown Project. As you know, we've had working meetings ongoing with Noblesville. This is their formal request. If you approve, Steve Wood, myself, Dan Stevens, and Connor will continue working with her and trying to accommodate the best we can, also recognizing that the operations of the county are paramount, so...
I thought we were working directly with Main Street on that.
So did I.
They are involved, the Main Street, we haven't, Steve and I have not met with Main Street yet. We wanted to work with the team from the mayor's office at first to see what their needs would be, particularly in this letter, the gold lot was addressed, and we believe, Steve and I believe we can accommodate both, but we have to, we have to still weigh in on that, on the impact.
Steve?
Aaron Headseer. Steve from the state of Noblesville. We're taking 21 spots back from the city during the construction of the project, and we instructed that if the Commissioners prove it would be on the fifth floor, and that still leaves room up on the fifth floor for businesses as requested. This would be the businesses and the renters who rent those spots, they would reimburse us those funds for that during the construction time.
Go ahead and talk and see what you...
Yeah, I'll report back.
I thought they were just looking at merchant parking, so...
Well, these are merchants that rent those spaces in the back of the gold lot already.
Okay, so that's, that's our market?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, that's who currently uses the gold lot. So we would be trying to work with them directly, 'cause they rent it to the, the city uses it for the merchants, so they're kinda paired together.
Well, currently, they are.
Yeah.
They could just work with us on those 21 people. I mean, I don't know why we have to make it real complicated with inter-locals and all that other stuff. I just think we come up with our program and we become the city during construction.
But, and that's perfectly fine, I mean, we're doing our new diligence like the...
No, and that's fine, I just, because once we put the city in, no offense, we're gonna have to, inter-locals and all this other silliness, which we're gonna plan to work with Main Street anyway.
Correct.
So it just adds 20 more, 21 more slots that we need to reserve for folks.
And we explained that it would only be fifth floor only.
Right.
And that whatever the services rendered, the dollars they get for that would be reimbursed to the county, or this.
Yeah, well, I just think we go directly, and then when it, we figure out what we're doing with that lot, we figure out what we're doing with that lot.
Perfect, and real quick, I'm gonna ask that we not use that lot till the first of the year. As I explained to the Noblesville that you guys were concerned about downtown events for holidays and Christmas, not to take that lot until the first of the year, which worked out with our vendors. And that's what I explained to them, you guys had asked me to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
No, they don't need to approve anything on that.
Yeah, the only change from what we planned on was, we have 21 more slots, we just need to run out to folks.
Yep, I'll report back.
Thanks.
Item number two, introducing a support letter for your review and signature, addressed to the ACEC, Indiana Engineering Excellence Award Review Team, expressing support for VS Engineering and their work that they did for us on the Bell Ford Bridge Project.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Item number three, introducing, introducing for your review approval and signature is an event application from the James C. Martin VFW, post number 6246, to utilize the Courthouse Square for Veterans Day Celebration on November 11th, 2025, from 10:30 to 12:30 PM.
And we will have all of our required insurance?
Yes, sir. The applications here and buildings and grounds will make sure that we're in compliance.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Item number four, introducing for your review approval and signature dispersment number 03 PSA to Envoy Incorporated for Design Services of the Judicial Center Expansion Project totaling $407,250.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Item number five, introducing for your review approval and signature dispersment number 02 PSA to Envoy Incorporated for Design Services of the Judicial Center Expansion Project totaling $284,625.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Hey, Connor? That's what the appraisal's for?
Item number six, introducing for review approval and signature dispersment number 01 PSA to Envoy Incorporated for Design Services of the Judicial Center Expansion Project[1630.37]